And Zoom all day long, too.
Okay, everyone, we're going to get started. I call this Bristol Town Council meeting to order of October 21st, 2020. I'm going to turn my screen so we can all see the flag here at Town Hall. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and rule.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome, everyone. Nice to see everyone. Mr. Clerk.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda.
Chairman, this is Tim. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to approve, seconded by Tony. Any discussion? Tim.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Town Council, is item A1, and this is the submission of minutes of September 30th.
Chairman, this is Tim. Make a motion to approve the previous minutes.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to approve, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Tim.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Aaron.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Town Council, is item C1. This is ordinance 2020-06. This is an amendment to the town code to codify the no, the traditional parking prohibited at all times on the south side of Lincoln Avenue. This is the second reading for adoption.
Tony, I make a motion, we approve it.
Okay.
There's a motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. May I, Tony? Am I clear to understand that this goes from Monroe to High Street?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Chief, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, it's the entire south side, which historically has always been posted, no parking. During the reconstruction of the road, we learned that there was, the signs that were posted were not authorized by ordinance. So that is to just straighten out our records and ensure that there's proper authorization.
Housekeeping.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Tim?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is the second reading for adoption of ordinance 2020-07, and this is to put part of Burnside Street into the residential parking zone and also to amend the residential parking zone to include Burnside Street.
Mr. Chairman, based on the police recommendation, I make a motion to approve the second reading for adoption.
Tony, second. And...
Motion made by Tim to approve and constitute second reading, seconded by Tony. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say thank you to Chief Lynch for all the work that he put in. Obviously, there was quite a bit of work, and he certainly spent quite a bit of time there, you know, on record, so thank you.
Well put. Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, I also just like to comment. I met with the chief, the petitioner, and we walked the street, and, you know, we know this is a good start, but there's also a plethora of other issues on that road as well that have to be built in. And the petitioner has met with the town administrator, and they're looking to put together a plan for 2021 to kind of take a look at it. It's multifaceted. There's roads, there's drainage, there's a lot of other things going on there. So I'm hopeful for the good progress down there, but this is definitely a good start.
Excellent.
Yep.
Is there any other discussion? So, hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is item C3. Mr. Chairman, and members of the Town Council, this is the second reading for adoption of ordinance 2020-08. That updates the industrial user permit fee schedule for the water pollution control facility. You have a late item request from the chemist at Water Pollution Control for continuance based upon some further gathering of information.
So, the reason why this, and the correct next step here for all of us would be to continue to our next meeting. DEM is looking into this particular portion, not just for Bristol, in fact, for all municipalities, including Bristol. I'm going to ask the administrator just to weigh in here real quick, but they reached out to us, I think it was the day before yesterday. So it's appropriate for us to hear their input and weigh that into any adjustments or changes that are made here. But, Mr. Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Chairman Claro. I think you covered it. We received a letter Monday from Office of Water Resources through DEM. They're looking at all significant impact users, which are new breweries fit into that category. While we were ahead of, we're trying to keep up and encourage the breweries in helping them, if you would say, being business friendly and trying to take away some of the requirements, we found that DEM would like to add some additional input. It's not only for Bristol, it's a good number of communities, as you see, this industry is growing. So we're trying to get ahead of the industry to help them open up, and it looks like DEM is involved. So we'd like to just continue this and make sure that we're in very good standings with the DEM.
I like the steps that the town took to be proactive, to limit fees and additional expenses when we didn't feel it was highest priority, but certainly we've worked very well with DEM and look forward to their input. What's this council's pleasure?
Chairman, go ahead, Tony.
No, go ahead. No, you're going to make the motion. Go ahead. I was going to discuss it.
You can second it, okay?
I'll do.
Just a motion to continue to the November 18th meeting.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Tim made a motion to continue to November 18th, seconded by Tony. Discussion, Tony?
Yes. On page three, number 16, it strikes out beauty salons is the reason why those are striked out in that area there?
Yeah, I can answer that. So, for many years, we were charging an assessment on barber shops and hair salons. And the reason, from my understanding, what I was told was the fee was part of the pre-treatment program. They're supposed to have hair traps. But in speaking with our sewer operator, Jose De Silva, there has never been a case that he could find where hair clogged the sewer lateral service or a main as a result of a hair salon or barber shop. So we just, we were going through the ordinances, doing a review of what we had there, what was obsolete, what could we do to be more helpful to business and still be in keeping with our requirements? We found that that was somewhat burdensome to charge small businesses $75 when we really couldn't prove that there was an impact because of hair and the drain. It's never, we couldn't prove that that was a documented issue. So we wanted to strike that fee for hair salons and barber shops.
Thank you.
Excellent. It's another business friendly. I like it. So we had a motion, I'm sorry, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, we had a motion and a second, so to continue to our next meeting. So, Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Town Council. The next item is item F1, and this is from the Acting Director of Public Works concerning the petition of Robert Rocha, 33 Prospect Street.
So this is on the agenda, kind of like the earlier ordinance to, I'll call it, housekeeping. I think the next appropriate step, Mr. Solicitor, feel free to correct me if I'm wrong here, we can refer this to you. What we need to do is create a no parking ordinance across the street from 33 currently. We need to then update, there is a accessible parking space that is currently there that'll be moved once the no parking is created, therefore taking care of both that current and existing handicap parking space, along with creating the no parking. So, if the council is amenable, we need to, a motion would be to refer this to the solicitor to create an ordinance for no parking.
I would like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman. I think it's a job well done, and it's always nice to see something get resolved that's been pending for a long time. I think the petitioner said that she was actually happier with the upshot than what she had applied for because it's going to be closer to her residence. So, that's a good win.
That will.
Yeah.
Love it. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr...
Okay, Mary made the motion to approve, seconded by Tony Texera. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I also vote aye, motion carries. Thanks, everyone.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Town Council, this is the second reading for adoption for a request for an accessible parking space by Agnes and Richard Marshall, 204 State Street. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator, Acting Director of Public Works, and also the town administrator and the chief of police.
Mr. Chairman, based on the positive recommendations, I move that we approve it.
Second.
Motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Tim? Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Also vote aye, motion carries.
In the final item, in this section, you have the petition of Zach Rivers and others requesting an amendment to the town code to allow for a greater use of the outdoor seating expansion on State Street. You have a recommendation provided by the Economic Development Coordinator.
Excellent. So, I think Zach is on the call. I know there's a Zach on the call, yes. Okay. Chris, you can, thank you, Chris. So, Zach, I'm going to open it up to you just in a moment here, just to refresh the public's memory. If you go down lower State Street right now, you will see outdoor dining in, temporary outdoor dining, parking spaces. I think it's worked out wonderful, this council, the administrator, and quite honestly, the town government in general has been very supportive of this and any steps to help our businesses and everyone go through this extremely difficult time with the COVID pandemic. I don't believe it has solved all of the issues, but it's certainly softened some of the blow. I'm interested to hear Zach's take on it. Obviously, I think it's going well because he's asking to make it a more permanent solution. But before, again, Zach, I'll recognize you here just in a moment. Currently, we have an executive order from the administrator, the appropriate place that would come from, ratified by the council, to allow this to happen and an easement of different zoning regulations that we have. It would seem appropriate that part of this discussion would be to have an updated executive order that would then expire at the end of the year to coincide with a few things that are going on. I see Chris Vitale on the call, our Economic Development Coordinator, as it pertains to a recent grant that the town got to assist for outdoor dining. What I speak of directly is heaters. Heaters at no cost, people can apply, business owners, to make it more comfortable for outdoor dining, i.e. have more people enjoy the restaurants in a safe and good way. So, let's go back to Zach. Zach, if you could state your name and address for the record, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, my name is Zach Rivers of Judge Roy Bean Salon. My address is 1 State Street, Bristol, Rhode Island. And on behalf of myself, the BMA, and several other businesses on this portion of State Street, we are just requesting that, you know, that we can propose a ordinance to allow us to have a seasonal outdoor seating area on the north side of State Street between Hope and Thames on an annual basis, running from May 1st until October 30th, and, you know, where we can apply for a permit, similar like to how we did for the, this emergency ordinance as of last, which, you know, as Mr. Claro stated, has been a huge help during everything going on right now for these businesses. Again, like I said, representing some of the businesses here because, you know, Bar 31 and Statesman, they were unable to join the call. They are, you know, they're the only cook in the kitchen, so they're stuck over there cooking right now. But, you know, as I've spoken with them, and they literally said this has allowed them to keep their doors open, and we're all hoping that, you know, this can be something that, you know, will help everyone get through the winter, knowing come the spring, we'll have an opportunity to do this. And I think it's been a really positive thing for the town as a whole. I know I've spoken to a couple of shops on the street, and they said, you know, it's really helped getting people walking around town. You know, it's brought business into their stores as well, and we think, you know, it would be a positive economic driver for the town. So, we're hoping that if we can do this on an annual basis between those months, that, you know, this would be a great thing to keep going. So, I appreciate, you know, any help with this.
Absolutely. Couple of things. First is that I know that I speak for the council and the administrator, that our commitment is not going away on this, the executive order that's out there. So what I mean by that is, is that this pandemic is going longer than anyone ever hoped. No one wanted it at all, but it's going much longer than anyone was hoping for. If the springtime comes around, I know for myself, and I really believe with my colleagues too, that we, this is a great time to ask for this, but if the springtime comes around and if, in executive order and additional time is necessary to help the businesses be successful, we're supportive, 100% supportive. So, I also commend you on asking this question now, not the day that it's needed, but months before. There's a lot of effort that would go into a permanent solution like this. I've reached out to the solicitor, in fact, I'm going to ask him to just kind of weigh in for all of us just in a moment, to talk about what would be those next steps. I want to hear from Mike, obviously, my colleagues want to speak on this. It would also seem appropriate that we refer this, that portion of it, to the solicitor to look into what is necessary. I know that there's zoning, I know there's ADA concerns. These are not reasons not to do it. These are things that we need to consider if we were to go to that next step. Mike, could you weigh in on that, Mr. Solicitor? Sorry.
Sure. No, Mr. Chairman, you're actually correct that we need to take a holistic approach if we're going to go in this direction, and that would include input and action from zoning and planning. We want to look at street parking, how handicap spaces might be affected. There's always the issues that we have to be sure that noise is kept under control. And then there's, of course, the council will have to take action with licensing for the liquor license. So, point being, it is great, it's being brought to your attention now because we can begin the process of addressing that. If you further matter at my office, what we'll do is we'll put together a plan of action, a timeline, what needs to be done, where it needs to go, and we'll certainly be able to do all of that well before next spring rolls around.
So to my colleagues, is, if that sounds amenable, I'm, obviously, in the discussion portion, I know you all would like to share some thoughts on this, but if that sounds amenable to all of you, could we get a motion to that effect with a second, and then we'll have some open discussion on it?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to refer to the solicitor to create a plan of action to come back to us.
Second.
So, motion made by Tim to refer to the administrate, sorry, the solicitor, seconded by Mary. Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Tony? First of all, I, I'm glad to hear that we're going to extend the executive order and actually we'll cover right through the end of the year. And then, obviously, you know, coming up with an action plan, because as you pointed out early on, you know, this is the least that we can do to continue to support our local businesses, you know, especially the restaurants in the area. So, I mean, full support of that.
Anyone else?
I just want to say, Tony is so right on that. I think, you know, we just need to make sure that we're looking ahead to the maritime expansion and sort of the experience that's going to happen down there. And I think when we see people dining and we get off the ferry, it's welcoming, it's welcoming. Not that we weren't welcoming before, I'm just saying it's adding, it's adding another slice, spice to come into town. And also, I just think with COVID, I think we're going to be in this for another year or so until that vaccine, the holy grail. I know, I know. I hope I'm completely wrong. I hope you're right. I hope you're right.
But we certainly need to plan ahead, so...
Yep. And you've all said it, that we need to do what's right for the businesses. So, I'm pleased that we're moving forward with this. Thank you.
Mary?
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to make, and one is, before I forget, I just want to, on the executive order extension to the end of the year, my suggestion would be to make it maybe like January 5th or January 10th, just because New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, the weekend after, you know, some of the businesses may want to have brunch or do something like that, and that way they're, they are covered through that amount of time. So that's one thing. The second is, just in relation to this, I actually love this idea. I know that there's a lot of issues that are, you know, in terms of fairness to all the businesses, zoning and planning and ADA that has just been mentioned, but I think it is one of the, you know, I don't know if I want to say anything's a bright spot in COVID, but, you know, it's something that we've learned, certain things that people have had to really do differently and, and, you know, put their ingenuity to work, and I think this was something that, I think it's a great idea. I think it is potentially a catalyst for bringing people into Bristol. And the one thing I was thinking about, Zach, that I was really happy that you brought up, was the issue of people saying that, you know, other businesses saying they've brought people in. Because I figured it would either be one of two things. I would think it would be a great catalyst to bring people in, and while they're waiting because they're walking, they're shopping, window shopping, what have you, or they would be frustrated because parking spaces, and we've been so hard on parking spaces because we have such a shortage. So I'm happy to say that, I'm happy to hear you say that, because I think that is one of the issues that we'd have to address to make sure those businesses are comfortable as well. And also, the businesses on some of the, like on Hope Street, for example, there's a restaurant, you know, that they haven't asked for anything, but I think that in State, on State Street, I don't know if it's too far to bring their food around, but, no, it may have to be shared by some of the other businesses that are, restaurants that are very, very, very close by, if that works out. But I know that there's a lot of work to do. I just saw a beautiful version of this the other day in Fall River. It's very tiny in comparison to what we have, and the only reason I didn't take any pictures of it was because I was on the phone. But I'll do that in a, you know, in a week or two. So, I just think it's, there's a lot to do. I think that the, between the BMA, maybe the Chamber, to help put this together and to come up with a plan that is fair to everybody, and I can just see this being, you know, like another wave of public relations for Bristol, as having these, all these businesses with this waterfront view. So, I do support, I hope we can work out a plan that is fair and equitable to every, all the businesses. And I finally want to just wrap my, wrap my comments up by saying that certainly the spring comes in March, I agree with Tim, I mean, even if there's a vaccine by the beginning of the year, by the time everybody gets it, and especially if it's a two-dose vaccine, it's going to be dragging into the spring and early summer, at the very least. I would hope that, you know, the executive orders could still, and we don't know where the governor in the state will be on any of these questions, but if we need to, that the executive order will, a new executive order will be in place, say, starting in March. And then this is still something that's sort of in the future, or is more permanent, but we don't know where we're going to be like in the spring. So we're ready to support you in any way that we can, but this does have to be addressed because there's not just, you know, restaurants on State Street, but there's restaurants all around, and some places just can't, there's just no way to free up any parking spaces in certain neighborhoods. So we just have to make sure that what we do is fair. I always talk about like we've set a precedent, and, but I have to say, the concept, I really like the concept of this, and I think you guys have done an awesome job down there. And I'm really, every time I drive by there, I just am so happy to see it.
Thank you. Aaron?
Chairman, thanks. This is Aaron Lee speaking. I think that all you have to do is go to State Street Fair, when they held the State Street Fair, to see what kind of success this has been, to have all the people that were out having mimosas and Bloody Marys or whatever, or appetizers in the morning and afternoon, but then having vendors come in and things like that. That was, I thought, a great example of ways that we can get people to downtown, and if we can get any to align with some of the other things, like the bathroom and the ferry that should be coming in on Saturdays and Sundays, what a great opportunity we would have to, you know, continue to make our town a destination. You know, certainly, I think that the sooner the better on these types of things. My question, I guess, maybe for the solicitor is, what are some of the next steps? Is this where, and by the way, before I even get there, thanks for bringing this to us, Zach, and to the BMA. Thanks for allowing us to listen to what you think is working for you. My question for the town solicitor is, what are their next steps? Are they, is this just a matter of, is this, they can get the ball rolling right away? Because it does sound like it might be a significant undertaking to address all of these in a holistic manner, but is this something that can get started on right away so that when it comes to order change, and this has to go through public hearings to do something like that, are we going to be able, you know, are you going to be able to work with them to make sure that the date that they have in mind coincides with the passage of the ordinance via?
Yes, Aaron, no question that we can do that because we know what we're looking for in terms of the beginning date, next May. We can easily, easily work backwards from that. So, the only reason right now the expansion is permitted is because of the executive order, because all of this is outside your ordinances, and therefore, it is just through the executive order that we're able to basically skip over the ordinance and provide for the businesses. Hopefully, and hopefully sooner than one year, those executive orders will be going away. And so what we need to do is we need to amend the zoning ordinance, for instance, to allow this outdoor activities to take place. We're going to want a report from the police department about, again, the parking and the handicapped and other issues, and to make sure that they're addressed in an alternate way. What I will do is I will begin on this immediately. I will put together the group of everyone we need to reach out to so that everyone can simultaneously be working on this, so we have confidence that this won't be an issue by the time we get to that point.
Thanks, Mike. And just to reiterate that, even if there was timeframe issues, that, we're talking about the spring of next year, that the executive order exists currently, and I did not hear any council person have issue with at least the temporary part of it, and obviously, we all want to do the right thing as it pertains to zoning, planning, accessibility, ADA, such and so forth. So, but Chris Vitale, I know that you had given us some supporting documentation through the administrator. Could you weigh in?
Good evening, everyone. So, as part of your packets, my recommendation actually isn't in there. I wanted the opportunity to sit down with the administrator to draft that recommendation. As we go through the process, I'd be happy to include something for your review as we're preparing this potential ordinance.
Perfect. Thanks, Chris.
I'll certainly work with Chris, too, for sure.
Thanks, Mike.
I just bring up one quick point.
Certainly. Go ahead, Mary.
Just the one thing that, the only concern I have is if we, you know, outside of addressing all these host of issues on a permanent basis, would be that this would be more in relation to the dining hours and not, you know, being outside in the summer till like, you know, 1:00 in the morning. I think that would be very disruptive. So that's the only concern that I have, but I can see the dining, you know, whatever the dining hours that you normally, you normally have, and each one of you has slightly different timeframes, but just to keep that in mind, I think that would be something that should be addressed upfront.
I know, that's, it's a great point. There's a lot of things that need to be addressed. I keep bringing up ADA. As you all recall, we took an immense amount of time, appropriately so, to pass the sidewalk use permit, and... And that had a lot of effort put into making sure that if someone is in a wheelchair, that they can, uh, pass unencumbered by a table or chair or, or a sign out there. And, you know, there's other considerations like stepping down off the curb into an eating area. Um, you got to make it accessible and available to everyone. And no one is saying otherwise. We just have to understand, if we wanted to do that, is it possible? What does it take to do that? But as I started at the beginning of this, is that there's, well, Zach, it seems that no one is supporting this whatsoever. I'm so sorry. So, you know, there's massive agreement that we want to find a way to make this happen. So, um, so with, unless there's other discussion, we had a motion and a second to, uh, refer to the solicitor. We've heard the other, uh, portions of the discussion. So unless there's anything else? Hearing none? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, is the first item in your appointment section. This is for, um, the annual appointment of the Fourth July Committee. You have a proposed membership roster provided by the, the chairman of that particular group.
Mr. Chairman, Tony, I make a motion, we approve the list.
Second?
Motion made by Tony to approve, seconded by Mary. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item is item I-1, and this is a, a correspondence from Gregory Gatos, 55 State Street. Uh, request council consideration to grant the Bristol House of Pizza a full BV liquor license. Uh, the council, I'm sure, is aware that there is no license available. So Mr. Gatos's request is to have the council consider creation of a new license, uh, for, potentially for, for the use of his business.
I see Greg is on the call. We'll call on him just in a moment. Now, Mr. Clerk, just remind this council, if we wanted to take the next, or let me say it this way, to take the next step and create a full BV, what is that? Referring to the solicitor to create an ordinance, to create?
Exactly, Mr. Chairman. The solicitor would, would rec, would provide ordinance language to increase the number of licenses. And typically, at the same time, we would encourage the, uh, the correspondent to, to apply for that license, so that the license would become available and there'd be a possibility of a granting of that license at the same time it becomes available. That's what's been done in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I, I know, uh, Greg Gatos is on the call. So, uh, Greg, if you'd like to share your thoughts on this, if you could please state your full name and address for the record. You are muted right now. You are unmuted. Go ahead. Are you there, Greg? I know Greg well, and he's usually not this quiet, so I don't think he's there.
You had to flip the pizza.
Well, I'll tell you what, as we wait for Greg to come back on the call, uh, what's my colleague's thoughts?
Um, Mr. Chairman, this is Tim. I, uh, just due to, we know that, uh, this, this business has been in our business since I think I was born. So they have been just good stewards to the town, and we know they're tried and true. And, uh, with that, I'd just like to make a motion to refer to the town solicitor to draft an ordinance creating a license for a BV full liquor license.
Tony, I second that.
So there was a motion to refer to the solicitor, seconded by Tony. Mr. Solicitor, could, just for clarity, is, which, would we have a corresponding, uh, ordinance that would remove one limited BV from this?
Yeah, I, I would prepare that so that, um, we do exactly that. We would have, um, a new full license created. If the council decides to create it at the same time, we would eliminate a limited.
Okay. So we had a motion and a second discussion? Um, I, Tim, I think you captured it very well. The, uh, Gatos's and Bristol House of Pizza are, have been there. I know, um, I'm, I'm picturing DPW, um, and the police department and other departments that go there very late when the snow is coming down. They open the place up to, to make food available and a place to use the bathroom, such and so forth. And that's just one of many things that they do. Um, I, I'll, I'm going to speak for Greg here. He was very quiet. Um, but, uh, they've done an outstanding job, and, and I'm not aware of any issues. Chief, are you aware of any issues in regards to, uh, liquor license, uh, I should say liquor license issues?
Absolutely no issues. Uh, I concur with the, uh, with the counselor Sweeney that they've been a legacy and a staple here in the town of Bristol and have been great stewards, as the rest of you have, uh, professed. And just last week, um, uh, just to show you how involved they are, uh, we had a call to rescue an injured animal down, uh, on the break wall, um, along the boardwalk. And one of our animal control officers was on the rocks rescuing the animal, and the portable radio valued at about fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars, uh, broke loose. And it fell between the large rocks. And Greg was in the area and noted that he had large crowbars that could move the rocks. So we spent two hours moving the rocks, and Greg was knee-deep in muck, uh, trying to rescue the police radio with, with, uh, construction-type bars to move things and elbow-to-elbow with us. Uh, the good news is, is that the bird was rescued along with the police radio, and it's just a testament to, you know, how involved he is in the community.
Greg, you did an outstanding job convincing us to take the next step here. Thank you, sir. Are you, you on the call now?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. My apologies.
No, not at all. If you could please state your name, your full name and address for the record. I don't know if you've heard, um, there's a motion and a second to refer to the solicitor to take the next step to create this. So, uh, but please, state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Gregory Gatos, 55 State Street, Bristol, Rhode Island, 02809. And I thank you all kindly for making this move forward to the next step. I appreciate it. And Chief, thank you very much for your kind comments.
And we appreciate you saving our $2,000 radio, too. Okay. Hearing no other comments? Uh, Mary?
Oh, I just wanted to say the same. I mean, you know, usually I'm kind of hard on liquor licenses, but this is a company, a, a business that's been around for a long time, and going from one generation to the next. And in Greg's comments, he wants to go to yet another generation, and I think that's commendable. And I know they've been a big part of the community, so thank you for everything that you've done, and even I'm going to support this liquor license.
Perfect. All right, Mary.
I know, it's like I'm usually a hard time person.
It's like Tony, is, I'm sorry, not Tony, I apologize. It's like Halsey and a tattoo polter. Usually don't get a thumbs up, right? So we had a motion and a second to refer to the solicitor. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Greg.
Thank you kindly.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is item I-2, and this is correspondence from the town solicitor and others regarding Reynolds School and, and its use by the Bristol Warren Regional School District.
Uh, Mr. or, Mr. Solicitor, Mr. Administrator, did you want to add anything here? It's my understanding, if, just on a quick overview, is that, um, I, it's not my understanding, I know. We received, uh, a request from the superintendent of schools, Dr. Bryce, um, for the use, or, so having the Reynolds School revert back to the district. The purpose behind that is that, uh, we have, uh, over, I believe, 200 children that, uh, want to come back from distance learning to in-person learning. Um, so that's what the request is for. Um, so this in-person learning for our children of Bristol is what this is supposed to do. Uh, I know that, uh, just on a side note, my kids go to, uh, school, uh, on a day-to-day basis. My son goes to KMS, so he's there two days and then three days, uh, alternating weeks. My daughter goes to Colt Andrews. And the in-person, it, for us, and doesn't have to work for everybody, but for us, has been a massive improvement for our kids, uh, just the better outcomes. Um, so I think this is a great next step. Now, obviously, this needs to go back to the superintendent and the school committee, and they'll take those next steps, and whatever steps those are. Um, but that's my understanding. Mr. Administrator, did I have that right?
Uh, you do, Chairman. Uh, so the communication we got back in, uh, September, September 29th, um, if all, currently, the district has 418 elementary students participating in distance learning. The district has 125 available, uh, seats. Um, that would leave 290 students, uh, that they would not be able to accommodate. Uh, and I, uh, I think this is important. Um, I really don't think it's much of a decision for the town. Um, I think it's, um, a school building. It's been a school building. It was a school been, building 10, 12 years. We've been maintaining it. Uh, but I, I, I think that if the school district has a need for a building, uh, that's safe, uh, and we'll make sure that it passes all health and fire and Department of Education standards, but it is, it is ADA compliant. Um, I think, uh, that we should be able to accommodate, uh, the needs of the students and the parents that want to send their kids to school. Uh, so I'm, I'm in support of, of this. There are tenants there, uh, but there was always full disclosure with all of the leases that if the Bristol Warren Regional School District ever needed the building again for educational purposes, there's a 60-day, uh, notification to, to, uh, terminate the lease. So it should not be a surprise, although we never saw this coming. I, I could not have predicted this a year ago. Things were going very well at Reynolds School. Uh, we have very good tenants there. But I, for me, um, I think part of our role here is public education. And I think it's critical that our children are in safe structures, which are school buildings. Um, so I, I, I think it would be a mistake if, um, children have to stay home and the challenges that accompany that, uh, are, 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 arise. And we have a, a school building at our disposal. So I, I am here to help the superintendent as much as I can to make sure that the school will be available if they need it. That is, if they need it.
Um, uh, before I open it up, and I saw Mary, so I'll call, just one moment. Um, Mr. Solicitor, is the, could you help us, and, and I'm going to open it up to Mary once you share this, is that, what would be the motion if we believe that this is the next appropriate step?
It, it would be stra, pretty straightforward. The legislation actually requires this to come before the council, and the motion would be to transfer the property, um, from the town to the Bristol Warren Regional School District.
Thank you. Mary?
Oh, I, actually, I was ahead of, I, I have a question for clarification. Uh, so I could wait till after the motion, if you want.
So I'll take that.
Something that Steve said that I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. So is there a motion to that effect for discussion purposes?
Yeah, I can, I can move that for discussion.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion made by Mary, seconded by Tony. Discussion, Aaron. Go ahead, Aaron.
I had a question.
I, I think Mary, uh, Mary wanted to go first, but I, I have a question as well, but.
Okay. So I'm going to come back to you, Aaron. Go ahead, Mary.
I just wanted to, uh, Steve, you mentioned that, um, it would be in co, you make sure that was in compliance with all the health, safety, um, in Department of Education regulations. And I wanted to just clarify that, is that it would be turned over to them in that condition? Or it would be up to the school district, once they take the transfer of the building, to, uh, address any of the, um, needs that may be, anything that may be needed to bring the building up to par, for whatever reason, whether it's like, um, you know, uh, high-speed internet, whatever, whatever it may be. I mean, is that, it going to be the town? Or, I mean, it's all the town, it's all the same taxpayers, but is it the school department and school committee that makes that decision, and will be paying for that? Or would it be us, um, be paying for that?
We'll, we'll make sure, at minimum, it's at the same standard as it was when it was decommissioned. So we, we'll do that. And also, um, is, as far as safety, can, uh, safety conditions, we'll make sure that it is, it passes. In fact, there's a crew there now doing some plumbing work. Um, as far as the education standards, I'm going to leave that up to the, the superintendent. We're working well together. Um, our teams will be collaborating as we get closer. Right now, there's very little we can do in the classrooms, because they're still occupied. Um, but, uh, it hasn't been a school in 10 years. So if there are some conditions, um, we, uh, that, that need to be improved, we, I think we have the time to do that. And I would say mainly, it'd be, uh, painting and, uh, and, uh, removal of different items that have, have accumulated in the building. But there's a working elevator that, uh, has been kept up and inspected. Uh, the sprinkler system has been upgraded and is inspected. Uh, the furnace was just recently replaced. Um, different parts of the, uh, building have been painted, and any paint, that, uh, old paint is encapsulated, and we'll continue to do that. And I, I, I just want to reassure any parents, it is an old building. Um, but it is a good, solid, safe building. And, uh, I, I just wanted to reassure any parents that might be listening that the building is going to meet standards, and the superintendent and I have discussed this. Uh, so it will be thoroughly tested, Department of Health, um, lead testing will be done. But right now, it's not a school building. So to say it would pass today, no, I don't believe it would. But before this first student steps in, it's going to be a very clean, safe building, and it'll have the IT infrastructure, according to the superintendent. He's going to work on that. There is, uh, in, there is, uh, network, network cabling in there from when it was the Art Magnet School. So the network cabling is in there. Uh, but I don't know if the bandwidth that they require, I don't know if that's up to par. But that's, that would be a school issue. But the big-ticket items and the infrastructure and the integrity and the structure of the building is a very solid, strong building. So, so I think, I, I hope to answer your question. I'm working with the school district. I think my, my point was, before the children enter the front doors, it's going to pass all required inspections. We're going to be confident that we're going to, that we can put children in there.
Of course. I just, I was just trying to define, like, um, whose responsibility.
Yeah, we, and honestly, we, we are spending the money that we would normally spend on the building. We're spending it now rather than throughout the year, just to get it ready for December, when there is a turnover. It shall, if there shall be a turnover. Um, so we're not, we're not, we're not cutting corners on the town side. And then again, if the building gets turned back over to the town, the improvements were made. And, uh, so I'm not, if it needs, if it's broken right now, we're fixing it. That's why if you drive by there, you're going to see DPW there. You'll see Yan Call Mace in there. Uh, so if it's broken, we're going to fix it.
I'll have to drive by there someday. I live, those who don't know, I live very close to the schools.
Aaron?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Aaron Lay. Um, I don't know if this question might be better for the solicitor or for the town administrator, whether it's an administrative question or a legal question. I'll go ahead and, uh, ask it. Um, I've talked to some of the current tenants over there. One of them being Bristol Theater Company. I know that they have a, a little bit of a longer lease, and, and they had the longer lease so that they could apply for certain grants and, uh, and things like that. And, um, I know a world exists where, um, you know, the school building might be occupied by the schools for a couple of years. Uh, and so my question, uh, has to do with, um, the event in which, um, the schools, the school is take, or, Reynolds School is taken over by the school district, but then the school district relinquishes the building back to the town. Uh, will any of that remaining time that, uh, the Bristol Theater Company has on their lease still be available to Bristol Theater Company to occupy the building again?
So I, I can answer that. The, the leases are all being legally terminated, so there will be no lease in effect. They will certainly have the opportunity to come back to the town if they want to enter into a new lease for whatever amount of time. But for purposes of the future, these leases will go out of existence.
So, Mike, would they have, would they have, um, first, first dibs, so to speak, if, if, if it does come back and they want to move back into the building? I mean,
I, you know, that's totally up to Steve and the administration. I don't see why not. That, that certainly makes total sense.
I think I, I think I'd like to, uh,
If you could, Mr. Administrator, and certainly make your point, I just want to remind everyone that, that we do have, sometimes we'll have people that are just calling in. So it's important that, I know, we all know who we're talking to. But if you could just say, this is Mike Ursillo, this is Tim Sweeney, this is Mary Corelli. Mr. Administrator?
Yeah. First off, uh, this is Steve Contenti. This, the, the theater group has been a remarkable, uh, asset to the town. Uh, they're, they've done great work. I think we've supported them, uh, wherever we could. I think we have a very good lease with them. They're a great tenant, and I do hate, hate to see them move out. I've talked to- talked to Dr. Bryce. I've been on the phone call with the executive director of the, uh, Theater Bristol, Bristol Theater Group and Dr. Bryce. And we're trying to find some way so that the school district can still accommodate the theater group while this is going on. And I will say, I would be in support that if, um, the building becomes available, that, uh, we get the theater group back. It's a great thing to have there. Uh, it's an asset for the town, our restaurants, uh, all the cast members that are involved. Just a terrific, terrific organization. But, uh, the thing, again, I would do have to say this, though, that our role and my role is, part of it is, uh, public education. And when the district calls upon us for the building, um, we'll certainly help the theater group. We'll help them get back in if and when the time comes. But right now, we need the building to get through this pandemic and make sure that our kids are learning and interacting with other students and their teachers. I think it's critically important. Uh, and again, there's, this, I know this is a school district issue, but there, I know this talk about putting children in trailers. I have a real concern about trailers versus a, a good structured brick building. Um, I don't think trailers would be an option, and I really would, would suggest that they, they don't consider trailers for children. Uh, there's security issues. There's, uh, the whole concept of children in trailers and the space involved. It's not a good idea. We have a good building. Uh, we'll make sure that it's up to par when they're ready to come in, and we're, we're going to be proud of it right in front of the common. So I think it's a great school. It's a great building and a great location. Um, and if, and when they don't need it anymore, we'll certainly call Bristol Theater. We'll call the other groups that were there because they really were terrific tenants. But this isn't anything we're looking for. I'll say it again, things were going very, very well there. Uh, it was a, a healthy atmosphere. But our priorities right now are getting the kids in the classroom safely, uh, if they, if the parents decide that they want to send them there. And I will also say that my, my children are in-person, uh, school, and, um, it's going very, very well. And I'm glad they have that opportunity. I hate to see it, I hate us to see us go backwards and then have to modify because we don't have seats or classrooms. We have at least 10 very good classrooms in the building that are out of the basement. Uh, and then there's also a music room there. So 10 classrooms can accommodate, um, quite a few, quite a few of those 290 students that may not be able to go to school.
Is there any other, uh, discussion? Okay, so, uh, the next step is this council to make a motion.
We did it already, I think.
We did that already. I'm sorry. Um, my notes are not clear on that account. We apologize. Um, so is there any other discussion? So the motion was to transfer. I won't go through the rest of that, but everyone knows what that was. Okay. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council is item I three, and this is correspondence from the town administrator, uh, presenting a, a new town treasurer for council consent.
Well, I, for myself, I'd like to know a lot more about this Julie Gaucher woman. I would say, it's, I got to tell you, Julie, it's wonderful to see you again. And, uh, I know that.
Very nice seeing everybody also.
It, it is. Uh, Raquel has done an outstanding job in your, uh, time away, and we are truly going to miss her. She did a great job, truly. Did a great job.
Yeah, we've been in contact quite a bit, and it does seem like, um, she had a really good handle on things. And I, I was, it was everything I hoped in her following, following behind me. So I was very glad she was there last year.
So as you can tell from my comments, I, I 100% completely emphatically support you coming back, and I will vote that way. So, uh, colleagues?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Tony, um, I move that we support the administrator's, uh, recommendation.
This is Tim. I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Tony to, uh, support the recommendation for Julia's treasurer, Julie Gaucher, excuse me, treasurer, seconded by Tim Sweeney. Discussion?
I just wanted to say, you're a great pull for, to Bristol. I'm glad you're, you're coming back.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to coming back and, and, uh, if the vote goes, goes well tonight, meeting the new department heads and, no, thank you.
Julie, I'm ecstatic that you're back. This is fantastic news. Um, I've always enjoyed working with you in the past. It's so awesome to ha, you need to have you back. So, um, it's, uh, it's great. Great news. Welcome.
Are you at the edge of your seat, wondering what's going to happen?
Yes.
Kind of like Greg Gatos.
No, no.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Uh, I have to think about that. Oh, yes, aye.
I also vote aye. It's, uh, it's a pleasure to have you back, Julie.
Thank you very much. I'm really looking forward to working with everybody again.
Did you want to add something?
Yeah, we could also, perhaps, the council send a letter of thanks in, uh, for all the great work that Raquel did for the past year. Uh, she was, uh, outstanding and, uh, she, she also gave us some very good recommendations and so forth. So, uh, I would like to wish Raquel Pellerin, uh, our best.
Can we have a motion of that effect, please?
So, so move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second again.
Motion made by Mary, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? I hope not. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. It's a great point.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council is item J one, and this is for bid 943 for the DPW vehi- vehicle lift replacement. Uh, you have two bids. The first is from Ray Jurgen of, uh, Bristol Connecticut in the, with the base bid amount of 386,385 dollars. And the second is from Steril Conny, USA of Stevensville, Maryland in the amount of nine hu, excuse me, 497,991 dollars.
I'm, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move, uh, to refer this to the town administrator, to act in the best interest of the town.
Second. And to the direct, uh, acting director of DPW.
Yes.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Mary to refer to the administrator. Is there any discussion? Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Chairman.
I think Steve wants to say something.
Go ahead.
Yeah, under discussion.
Go ahead.
Steve Contenti here. Yeah, I, I know these, we were a little bit shocked. We had some sticker shock here with the price. So I, I know all of you are probably thinking the same thing. Uh, so just, uh, the acting director, Chris Corello, and I did meet, uh, about these prices, and we're going to try to some, find some other alternatives, just so, uh, you can sleep a little bit better tonight. Um, but, uh, this type of a model, uh, close to a half million dollars, I, I just don't think it's going to be, uh, uh, feasible, feasible. Nice product, but, um, we're going to have to try to find another safe solution.
I understand we have a new treasurer. Maybe she could have said that in her conversation. Sorry.
I, I'll, I'll elaborate further. I think the problem with this, uh, so these are two heavy lifts in the DPW garage, and, uh, they have large pistons and hydraulic reservoirs. So the problem would be if, if, once we're dismantling them, uh, we find that there's any oil in the ground. And once you deal with equipment like this, it, it, uh, makes it very costly dealing with hydraulics and so forth. That's why these, these prices are so high. So we're, we're going to try to look at different styles of lifts, maybe at a different location. Uh, but, uh, we think, we have some ideas. We think we'll come back to the council with some type of an alternative.
Outstanding. It is so important to have safe equipment for, uh, people that work on the trucks. These are massive pieces of equipment. So not only lifting them up, but keeping them from coming down if something happens. So, um, so I'm going to ask for that vote again. Thank you, Mr. Administrator. Uh, Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Yeah. The next item, Mr. Chairman, uh, final item of the eve, of the evening is the, uh, monthly report provided by Alan Klepper for the Bristol County Water Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to receive and file.
Tony, second.
Motion made by Tim to receive and file, seconded by Tony. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Tim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Um, ladies and gentlemen, that is the end of our agenda, and there is no executive session. Did I miss anything? No, I did not. Um, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, uh, I know we can't have any discussion, but I will say, I wish you all luck. Um, in the time that we're, it's weird. We would normally say X day, but is all the days that we're in right now leading up to that last one. So we won't have any discussion about that, but I wish you all luck. So can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion made by Tony, seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good luck, everyone.
Good luck.
Good luck, everyone.
You too.